Seven o'clock, right in the notes. Call the Brandon Select Board to order for July 8th. I want to thank you all for attending, members of the public. And I will make my same announcement that I made last time, that this is a five-member board. We have only three present, so every action must be unanimous tonight in order to pass, so that we have a majority of the elected officials and not just a majority of those present. Item one, call to order and adopt the agenda. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Coolidge moves. Mr. Giles seconds. I have some changes, if you don't mind. Item 3A, I'd like to offer a resolution on the death of Art Doty. As item 6E, before adjournment, I'd like an executive session for 1PSA, 313A1, Confidential Attorney/Client Communication. Any other changes?
Did you want to add a wetlands on this, or you just wanted to go public comment?
It sounds like you personally wanted to do this to the public comment. I don't think it's worth it.
My previous statement is now inoperable. I had four selectmen present, so we only need three. We do not need unanimous votes. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Before we approve the minutes, I'll just announce for public information that the next Select Board meeting is scheduled for July 29th instead of the 22nd. That's the fifth Monday of the month instead of the fourth Monday of the month. Item two, approval of the minutes of June 24th. Is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Coolidge wants to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Giles seconds. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Mr. Wyman abstains. Mr. Wyman abstains. Item three, Town Manager's Report.
This is my report for the weeks of June 24th and June 30th. Union Street Sidewalk, the notice of war has been sent to Markowski's once they return it, who will have a start date for construction. Park Street, we have a pre-bid meeting, mandatory pre-bid meeting with contractors tomorrow morning at 10:30. And our bid old thing, as I said last time, is still scheduled for the 23rd of July. Segment six, two-week look ahead. High Street Waterline Installation, Water Testing and Transfer to New System in Segment A, which is the South End, High Street. Route 7, South Sore Lane, as well as water service installations and stormwater drainage installations. Segment C, we're going to have some night work downtown for sidewalk removal and soil installation for the trees, site lighting conduit and sidewalk preparation, so that will be night work. Segment B, we'll be doing more sidewalk up there, but park. Segment E, sidewalk in front of the laundromat, Ace Hardware, Champlain Farms, McDonald's, we're going to have to move some curb around there, and we've got a couple other spots where we'll move some curb. Central Park Fountain, they're going to start working on that, I believe, tomorrow. And they're seeing some plantings in Segment B, D, E, and F next week, so it's exciting to see. Route 73, we do get updates from the state on this, so I'd like to share them with you guys. They're reclaiming, as you've all seen on Route 73, should be completed by the middle of this week. The second pass reclaim operation will begin later after that's been completed. And grading work will continue to follow reclaim operations in Brandon for the entire week, and I believe they're starting to aim on top part now, so. Other happenings, we are going, starting to do some work on McConnell Road with color board stitches and wheelrock repairs. That's going to happen off and on for the next few weeks. We're looking at paving in mid-August, so.
Thank you, Mr. Appleton. Questions for the Town Manager from the Board? Mr. Coolidge? Mr. Giles?
No.
Which one?
Just on McConnell Road. Is there, would it be beneficial for our guys down there if we put a wall through traffic when they're working?
No. I mean, that might be blocking another road. We talked about that, but they're usually just working in one lane at a time anyway, in short spot, so I think we'd have some more dysfunctional drivers if we were to do that, too.
And the other thing is, when they are working on it, would it be a benefit to have all of these flagging companies, flagging their records, tying up all of our...
Well, we'd have to hire to do it. We might be able to get someone from PD to help them out, like an H chief, but I mean, I see your concern. See the issue with... They're all flagger certified, so.
No, I know they're flagger certified, but how many operators do we have as far as it can run like the grader, or?
Well...
Now, I mean, we've rented, mostly rented the excavator.
Yep, we did rent the excavator.
And this is a grant, so I guess what I'm learning, if it would be a benefit? I don't know how much, are we doing the ditches, too, or just?
Yeah, we'll do ditch work, and then we got to do that, like the wheelrock repair and then three days on that, and all the spots there on the North Mountain.
Well, I said, I was just wondering if we could use our, a couple of our guys elsewhere, maybe would it be beneficial?
Well, we have, I mean, one problem is, we technically only still have a third person highway department, and then we have our building to the grounds guy who's trying to keep up with keeping the parks mowed and everything else, so. At this point, and really only, Sean's really the only one that is trained to run the grader right now, so probably get some time, get the other two up to speed on it. So probably not, I just, I don't know what else.
Okay.
Yeah, we need, we need that laundromat, a couple of those, I think, so, but, yeah. But we, I, I'll see if PD can do something, maybe slowing some traffic down, but.
I know, I just, when I stopped there, I wonder if they're covered in. I just got to talk to him for a minute, I said, "My God, traffic..."
And it's the short cut now, but that one's going to go quick, so, you know. Nobody likes flaggers. One of them said to me today, "Now I know why flaggers don't smile."
Well, for the record, I like flaggers. We all appreciate the flaggers and the birthday. Anything else? Questions from the public for Mr. Appleton? Any questions for the Town Manager regarding this report?
Yes, Mr. Powell. Hi, David. Does that include in front of Fort Conant Square?
Night work? The night work?
Oh, no, not the night work. It's all around it, like the soil and the plantings.
Yeah, I believe so. Well, you're in Segment D, so yes, that would be, I don't know what the, like, when they're going to be exactly there, but it definitely is, and it says B, D, E, and F, so, yeah, you guys will be getting, seeing something going on there, so.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, if not, we'll move along. I would, I did have a resolution I'd like to offer. I'll read it, because it didn't make the packet. Whereas Brandon has lost an exemplary citizen with the passing of Art Doty on July 2nd, 2019. And whereas, at the time of his passing, Art was continuing his many years of service to protect public health and quality of life as an official representative to the mosquito control district. And whereas Art was a man of many interests and gifts, sharing his knowledge of sailing with youngsters, his love of model railroads with many, and his musical talents with people special to him. And whereas Art accomplished the rare feat of being elected to the respected office of moderator of two different Vermont towns, presiding over the Brandon Town Meeting after moving here from Salisbury, where he had also been elected moderator. And whereas, because he was a believing Christian, Art believed in second chances, fostering humane treatment of vulnerable children in the care of Vermont State Institutions, and giving of his time and good judgment to Brandon's restorative justice program for youthful offenders. And whereas, Art Doty was one of a kind, and Brandon won't be the same without him. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brandon Select Board expresses its sorrow at the death of Leo Arthur Art Doty Jr., veteran of the United States Army, self-directed entrepreneur and community citizen. And be it further resolved that the Brandon Select Board observe a moment of silence in memory of our friend Art Doty at its July 9th, 2019 meeting. And be it further resolved that the Brandon Select Board extends its condolences to Art's gracious wife and life partner Donna and their children Paul and Susan, and that a copy of this resolution be shared with the grieving family. I think we all miss Art in different ways for different things. Art was a great contributor. So I would, I move adoption of the resolution. Second, for Mr. Giles, Mr. Rousenberg.
I think you said July 9th, 38th.
Oh, I apologize. It was meant to be July 8th, you're right. Fix that. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. And if we could all stand for a moment of silence for Art? Item four is public comment and participation and further items that are not on the agenda. I'll start with the Board. Mr. Wyman, anything not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Giles?
Um, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Coolidge? Anybody from the public tonight? Mr. Rousenberg?
Yeah, a few Select Board meetings ago, we were talking about this wetlands reclassification. I think you were all led to believe that we didn't have to vote on this, that Select Board really had no sway one way or the other. I think that it's important for the Select Board to revisit this and to have a vote, because there's a lot of landowners. I went to this Salisbury meeting that they had, and there were a lot of farmers there that are not happy with this. I think that the Town Select Board should vote one way or the other, even if they're in favor of it, or they're not in favor of it, regardless of whether it has any effect on the outcome of this. If you voted in favor of it, I think you're going to show the landowners that you have their back, that you really feel that this is not something that we need to do. If you vote no, well, then you're going to have to answer to the landowners, but I strongly feel that this is something that the Select Board should do. I don't think that there's very many landowners, like I said, that are behind this. I got a copy of a letter that supposedly went out to the landowners at that meeting. There were landowners that had not gotten this letter, and I know of two landowners that still have not gotten this letter. There's eight people on this steering committee level that I have. I know that another letter's come out since then with another person added on to the steering committee. Out of the eight that are on the letter that I have, there's only one that has any skin in the game. All the rest of them are just, you know, they're citizens, but their land is not affected by this, and I think that's wrong. You have seven people that are going to tell all these landowners what's going to happen with their land, and I just don't believe that's right. So, take it for what it's worth, but I really feel that the Select Board should revisit it and vote on it one way or the other, and let the landowners know where they stand.
So I attended the informational meeting in Cornwall, not the one in Salisbury that you attended, and they were pretty clear that there's no role for the towns.
I can just add that.
I don't know that the Board has had enough information. I don't know that the Board would even want to vote absent a full Board, and I don't know what, I know that we were talking about some time pressures about decisions being made and maps being drawn and stuff. I'm not sure that even without a map being drawn, it would be premature to vote. Do you know what I mean? They talked about, you know, we have, we have this Class II wetland that's established, and maybe the Class I wetland will be inside of it. And if that's the case, then there's going to be a lot less property infringement.
Well, I didn't hear that, but I...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think they've decided yet what they want the Class I wetland to look like, and I think we shouldn't. I'm inclined to think, and I'll let the other Board members weigh in, but I'm inclined to think that we would be put in the cart before the horse to vote yes, we support it, or no, we don't support it, if there has not even been a map drawn then.
Well, my point, too, is they never should have even had these meetings, because I don't think they have all the ducks in a row. I mean, they, this was crazy.
I think they're following the process.
Well, it would be nice if they let all the landowners know that there's a meeting.
Certainly, certainly.
Part of, when you say the landowners weren't contacted, it's not clear, because the boundaries haven't been established, whose land is affected by this? And so when they sent out the letter, they sent out the letter to the people that they thought were going to be affected by this change. And so if you didn't get a letter, then, then your land shouldn't be affected by this change. And it's true that once the boundary gets laid, then we'll know specifically, but it's a, it's a fair thing to have seen the process they went through, because they used, you know, geo-mapping software that's available at the state level, and they overlaid it with a mapping level at the town, because they have all the property stuff, and they put that on top of each other, and came up with a conservative boundary of what they thought was going to be the affected land, and those who, that's who they mailed to. And so when people say that there are layers in the wetland and they didn't get a letter, it's because they didn't fall into that category of affected land.
Well, I just don't believe that you should send out a letter like this. It just, you give an information, what about the people that might be affected by this that still didn't get the letter? Just because you did an overlay of a map, you don't, they have no, they don't have any information. There's no map for this wetlands classification. There's, it hasn't been mapped. So why are you even discussing anything until you do that? Have a map before, so you know what you're doing. You don't, you don't know that all these people that didn't get a letter are not affected. You're assuming that they're not affected, but what if they are? So you have an informational meeting that they didn't attend because they didn't get a letter. I, I just think that this, this whole thing, there's something is wrong with this, this whole thing. It was supposedly, it was started in March, and we want to get all these letters out by August, and it's like, what's the rush? I understand that the process is long after that, it has to go through a lot of other things, but why are we rushing through this? Get this part straight. It's not straight. It's not even close to being straight.
I think to characterize it as a rush is inaccurate, that this has actually been a thoughtful process with thoughtful people going through every effort to try to be as open and inclusive as possible. And it's all well-intentioned.
Well, when you have seven out of eight people that are not possibly affected by this, to tell the other people that this is what we're going to do with your land, is wrong.
The wetland is a resource for all of us in the state, and that's one reason why it's part of the democratic process to go through what it should be classified as. And so to suggest that only landowners should have to say over what happens in the wetland is not the way public resources work. I mean, when we talk about clean water, we don't just talk about the people who live on Lake Champlain. All of us care about clean water in the state. When we talk about clean air, it isn't just the people that live next to the polluting factory. All of us care about clean air. And so the wetlands is a public good.
It could be a public good, but this thing was, these classifications were made in 2010, and legislators or whoever was in charge of this process didn't think that this class, this deserved a Class I classification. Now all of a sudden we do. You're telling me that the wetlands, you know, there's a big expanse of land, it's going to flood. If you're in a flood plain, it's going to flood. So what's, what's getting better? What, what are we making that's better? The only thing I've gotten out of this is, we're going to be the best of the best swamp. That's what I get out of this. And the people that are affected by this, you're, it's a land brand. You're making a bigger buffer, and after five years, if you don't log or flog your land, you're going to lose it, and you're probably not going to get it back. And it's going to flood, whether it's a Class I or a Class II. So what's the big rush about making it a Class II? I don't, I don't understand it. I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy feeling about turning this into a Class I. I mean, I don't, I don't have any, it doesn't affect me. It can, whatever happens, happens. But I think this is wrong. I think this whole process was done wrong. I don't think that the landowners, I don't think there was any consideration at the beginning of any of these landowners. I don't believe it. I'll never believe it.
Well, I think, I think this is the beginning. You know, you said it's a long process. It is a long process. I, I had probably the opposite experience that you've had, where I initially thought, oh, this is kind of a waste of energy. It's probably going to bother the mosquito district. It's probably going to upset landowners and cause them to lose their ability to do what they've been doing. And as the process has worn on, and we've had the information, and have gone to meetings, I've felt less that that's the case, and more that this is a, this is a question of kind of recognizing something for what it is in terms of what it contributes to ecology and, and the overall picture. I left the meeting in Cornwall thinking, all right, you know, I expressed a concern for the mosquito district, and they got a letter from your, from the agency that regulates you. They got a letter from agriculture that said, no, like, it's not going to affect insect control.
I, I understand that, and I'm not here because of that. I'm just here because I'm Wayne Rousenberg, a citizen of Brandon. And this is, this is my position on something that has no effect on me, but I think it has an effect on a lot of other people, and I don't think they're all in the process here. I think they've been left out, so.
So, Wayne, these are not, like, the state isn't taking any land. They're not like the NRCS easements where they're selling their development rights or anything else. None of that's taken place, so. And, you know, from when I was at the Cornwall meeting, too, and there, from what I gathered, and Seth just said, that the Class I could be within the Class II and not change a thing, you know? But I do feel that folks need to know that this isn't like a, you know, a restrictive covenant put under property, that you're not allowed to do this or do that. And I mean, we probably, we as the town, and I've said this at every meeting we've had here, we probably have stricter regulation with our river corridor and with our flood plain management than anything that wetlands do, so.
Well, I disagree with you about the, the not taking of the land. I mean, if, if I'm in a Class II, and you're telling me that after five years, if I don't farm or log it, it's going to revert to a Class I, and I can't farm it, then you're not telling me you're taking my land?
I don't think that that was portrayed that way either, because that question was asked at the Cornwall meeting about this whole five-year thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like, if the growth hadn't, like, if it hadn't turned into...
What, vegetation? Right. As far as mechanical...
Right. Then it was still, it would still be a terrible work of a land.
Mr. Powell has a hand up?
We were at the Cornwall meeting also, and I agree with, I do not have, we now have wetlands, but it's not, it really doesn't have any bearing on this conversation, so I'm just speaking as a private citizen, the same as this gentleman is, but I agree with David and Tim and Seth. I agree with every man they have said, for the record.
Mr. Bill?
There was also a conversation that was encouraging about programs to compensate these landowners through tax incentives and things like that, because of their contribution to the ecology. And I thought that was really the hot, one of the hotlines of the meeting. I know that it's not going to happen tomorrow, but she didn't just pull that out of her hat to, as a carrot. Obviously, they've been having discussions about how to compensate people that contribute these lands to the environment, and that, to me, was very important, and that should be the conversation to encourage as well.
Is there anyone else who'd like to weigh in?
Yes.
Yes.
I have some, the concerns that I have with it, like, somewhat agree with Wayne. There is a, there is a number of people out there that you say aren't going to be, that might not be within this restriction, but if they have a right-of-way going across this Class I wetland, they do have, they do have a dog in the fight, because...
Right-of-way won't go away.
What's that?
The right-of-way won't want to go away.
There's, I know the right-of-way won't go away, but there's, there are going to be restrictions on roads.
Anything they can do in a Class II, could you do in a Class I?
I mean, I just, and I don't have enough information on it, I guess, to really give my own support.
Well, this is the thing, is that, you know, we can have, we got a presentation, all five of us. Some of us have, I mean, I think we've been getting emails and distributing things that have come around from the steering committee. There have been public informational meetings, there have been newspaper stories, but I don't know that the Board has enough information to take a position, and I hope that you're sensing that if the Board were to take a position tonight, I think the Board's position is divided at best.
I'm not looking for you to make a decision tonight, looking for you to make, to have another discussion in the future when you have a full Board, and to at least let the landowners know that the Select Board is either for this or against it. That's, that's what I'm...
That's not, that's not an unreasonable thing to ask. You know, I, I'm not prepared tonight to...
I'm not, I'm not looking for that.
But I, I would welcome more input tonight if it's available, and if not, I would welcome the Board continuing to study about it and ask questions about it, and hopefully get answers about it, and take a position if that seems the appropriate thing to do at the end of that process. Representative Bush.
Permission to speak?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on, on this topic specifically. What draws me here is, I had read in the reporter that Selectmen Giles had said that the, our elected representatives, his understanding was that our elected representatives will weigh in on that sort of vote on this. So that piqued my interest, so I started doing some research as to how this all, I thought I knew, but now I think I know better, how this all rolls out. And somebody said earlier, this is a long, long process, the process is this long, and you're here about one inch into the process. Anybody, any citizen can petition the agency of natural resources, the Natural Resources Board, to create a Class I to a three wetland in the state of Montana. Doesn't have, it's not, doesn't have to come from anybody within... Doesn't have, it's not, doesn't have to come from anybody within state government, it can come from any citizen. I think that's the way, might be where you are now in this process. As the process moves forward, there are certain things that have to be done. You should know that the secretary of the agency of natural resources is, is the sole person that will make the recommendations for the natural resources board, whether this is a class one, two, or three. Should she so desire, after going through several steps as required in statute, to determine whether this should be a class one, a class two, or even a class three wetland. That whole process is, is very lengthy. There are public hearings along the way. Right now, I take here the informational gathering cross period right now.
I think that the meetings that have happened have not even been the required public hearings.
They're not, as far as I know, there's been no action taken by the secretary's office. So the, so the secretary is required to cooperate with municipalities and, and the public and other agencies to determine whether this wetland should be reclassified. So she, Secretary Moore, is compelled to notify this select board if you have a land that is under consideration for this change. So I suspect you, if you haven't been notified officially by the agency, you will be as the process moves forward. Should the process, the petition that has been generated moves forward further and it gets to the desk of the secretary, she will begin the process of looking at this, going through all the various hoops that they have to go through to reclassify this particular wetland. That's when, and I, and I understand, and I had, I had phone calls from constituents who say we weren't notified. I don't know that anybody in state government is ready to notify anybody quite yet because there's nothing has officially, to my knowledge.
The petition has not been generated yet.
Right. So, so, so as far as A and R knows, officially they know nothing about this currently. Should they generate petition, then that will start the process rolling further, which will require a whole series of public hearings in every town. At least two, I'm assuming at least two, because that's the way most state government functions work. And then that, then it will move forward. So if, should the secretary make a determination that this should be classified as a class one, that would be the time that you would want to weigh in. When, if, if the board felt so compelled to do that, you would weigh in at a public hearing at that time, one way or the other. Once all the information is gathered, once the maps have been drawn, once the affected property owners have been notified. And I was, I'm surprised to hear about this compensation program, but I'm glad to hear that. And so that process hasn't even started yet. Should, should this be classified as a class one wetland, current rules, and I do not know all rules, I couldn't get through them today, so I can say I don't know all the rules, will be implemented in this class one wetland. And that'll be, I'll get that further information to the board as to what all the rules are. And then the secretary will then recommend to the natural resources board this be classified as a class one wetland. That's usually a rubber stamp by the NRB. Should the secretary be reading that there are further rules needed for this, say, this particular wetland and say that hypothetically, that she determined this should be a hundred and twenty-five foot buffer and not a hundred foot buffer as a, which I believe by rules a hundred foot buffer. She would have to promulgate rules and take those rules through the rulemaking process, which includes more public hearings. It all, then it would go, it has its necessary public hearings and time and all those things it takes to do those, one hearing and have the hearing. And then that, should it get through that process, the rules may be massaged. They'll be submitted to a committee called ICAR, which is the, got off the two as my acronym yesterday. Anyway, ICAR, the Interagency Committee on Rules, which is the administration, will then, will then have a meeting and they'll, they'll review the rules. ICAR will review, review the rules and they'll, that's the interagency, interagency committee on administrative. They'll review the rules and should they decide to make a change or would like more information, they'll send it back to the NRB or to the secretary. If the changes presented to ICAR again. And if ICAR then approves, it goes back to A and R. A and R will go through the process, the rulemaking process again with public hearings and then take those rules to ELPAR, which I know that one, that's Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules. That will be, that's a ten member committee, five from the House, five from the Senate that reviews all rules. And they will review the rule. If they agree with the rule and they will then ship that version of the rule to the committee jurisdiction, typically the chair of the committee jurisdiction says, yes, this is being intended by legislature. And boom, they, ELPAR will approve the rules, they'll go back to A and R and then it will be in effect. Should ELPAR not approve the rules, this is the sticky piece, should ELPAR not approve the rules within a certain period of time, the rule comes into effect without legislative But it does not have a full force of law behind it because it had missed the stat. So it's, it's a long, long convoluted process, meant to be that way. So that keep the public and people like Mr. Rosenberg has a chance to weigh in and select boards and the towns have a chance to weigh in on this, on this whole process moving forward. It's, it's long, it's arduous and the public will have a chance to speak along the way. So you're way over here in this process. Without petition, and Tim says there, no petition has been filed, so you're just in the pre-petition stage, so you're even that far down, down the road.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of what I know about that.
If I might be so bold, just to cap off that wonderful explanation, it's a long democratic process. And I think that's the part that we need to keep in mind as we go forward, is that this is supposed to be a process where ideas come forward and you hear one side and you hear the other side and the process works.
And, and I agree, however, when, that's my experience, when people say we want to change a wetland, everybody goes in the pan because of whatever reason, but it's another step by the state to change the way we use the land. And people have, have, and I think rightfully so, have some fears of that. So that's why the process is long. That's why everybody has to jump through all the hoops so that, especially the landowners understand what's happening to their land. No, I'm here to represent you folks, but we will not see a vote on this on the, in the general center. This will be all taken care of outside of the general center.
Further comments? Okay, if not, I think that, I think we'll take it under advisement and that at a future board meeting, I think we should discuss it further.
Yes, I agree.
Other public comment or participation tonight, other topics? Mr. Bueller.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the land purchase, the town, from the town of Brandon that was cabled back in March. It had to do with notification and valuation. I think there was kind of a healthy discussion about maximizing the town's profits on selling the land and also the notification to the public. And so it was tabled at that time. I know that Mr. Giles had some thoughts on it as well. And so at what point does that process occur or?
Yeah, can, can someone refresh me on what, are we talking about a particular parcel?
But it was just the process, period.
Oh, the process, the process of selling. I get it. Okay. This was not like an offer.
Sale of any town property. It was about notification of this. I know we felt that, you know, adjoining landowners really should be notified. They had probably the most interest and would probably pay the most. I think that was Mr. Giles's thought as well at the time, as I recall, as a minister call, I should say. So it was, it was taken at the time. You brought up middle area.
No, I appreciate that reminder. That was an issue I brought up. And I, I'm intending to explore model procedures or policies in other towns through our association with the Ramon League of Towns and Cities of the United States. Thanks. I think it was something like that. Still new to the acronyms. And so, yeah, I appreciate the reminder. I haven't done anything with that yet. So just, we, the process that we currently follow is what is provided to us through statute. So we do statutory follow how the town notices land. I do understand where Mr. Bueller's coming from, that, you know, we don't have to notice it until after we've had an offer.
Right.
So, but we're not really advertising land for sale either. It's sort of happened on a call us up and hey, yeah, make us an offer, you know? So.
So anything that the board did consider would be in addition to the statutory requirements that we're meeting. And Mr. Giles is probably going to be the one to originate a suggestion.
Great, thank you.
Other public comment, participation? I did want to make one announcement of community interest. Some of you know Ken Backus and his wife, Brandy Whitney Backus, they lost their house in a fire last week. Nobody was hurt. None of the firefighters was hurt. The family was away. But they are going to have quite, quite a hurdle to rebuild their house and get their family back together. They're kind of scattered in three or four different dwelling situations right now while they're without a home. So if anybody's inclined, there's a GoFundMe, if you can find the GoFundMe for Brandon, Vermont, and I would encourage contributions. Item five is to approve the tax rate for the present fiscal year, which we're already eight days into. We better get cracking on this. Let's pleasure the board on the tax rate that is presented by the town treasurer. Thank you, Mr. Coolidge. Mr. Coolidge moves to approve. Mr. Wyman, seconds. So the tax rate calculated is a municipal rate of nine, zero point nine six three. And that's expressed in, that's expressed as ninety-six cents per thousand. We're going to make it out to be two and a half percent at the end.
I was really, I was in my house and I came out right.
Yeah. municipal rate zero point nine six three. Homestead education rate one point three three four three. Homestead, no, sorry, education non-residential rate one point five five one six. So that's the tax rate as it's calculated from what the voters approved and the legislature established as the education yield. Right? Right. Any discussion on the tax rate? If not, no in favor of approving the tax rate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Abstentions? The ayes have it.
There would be less than, I'm just thinking that's less than one percent per hundred. So max that would be for.
It's per hundred.
That's what I do with taxes.
Per hundred. Because, because it will be like two hundred and change.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so we have four warrants. We have a previous year warrant of thirty thousand, thirty dollars, thirty-eight cents. Is there a motion? Mr. Giles, oops, approve. So second?
Second.
Coolidge, second. Any questions? If not, on favor of last year's bills, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Item B is a present year warrant, first warrant of the fiscal year, a hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars, ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion? Mr. Wyman, moves. Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Coolidge, second. Any discussion? I want to thank the new, the administration for the new format. I have almost no questions because we've got the extra information.
All in the description.
Yeah, very clear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item C, Route Seven Construction.
I'd like to motion approve.
Mr. Coolidge.
Six hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and two cents.
That's a two cent score.
I'd like to give him a two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Giles, second. Mr. Coolidge, motion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman, stays. Item D, Bridge One Fourteen, warrant for two thousand, thirty-nine dollars, any cents?
Motion to approve.
Is joining moves to approve?
Second.
Mr. Giles, second. Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. So what we'll do is recess the select board and then we're going to have a board of sewer commissioners meeting and then we will reconvene the select board in the executive session and then adjourn.